Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Illyria City Council meeting for October 18th, 2021. At this time, I'd like to have a moment of reflective silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you please could, put your phones on silent or off. Ms. Davis, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Sir, can I roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Sarah.
Here.
Mr. Oswald.
Here.
Mr. Baird.
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Tolet.
Here.
Mrs. Simmons.
Here.
Mrs. Davis.
Here.
Mrs. Keys.
Here.
Mr. Jesse.
Here.
Mr. Stewart.
Here.
Ten present, I've got excuse for Mrs. Keys.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Sarah.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tolet. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Like that this time pass our condolences out to Mrs. Keys and her family for their Our thoughts and prayers are with you. Public hearings?
There are none.
Can I get approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Sarah.
Second.
Second by Ms. Simmons, Mrs. Simmons. Questions been called, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Remarks and reports from city officials.
Mayor Whitfield.
Good evening, thank you, Council President, and good evening to council members as well as residents and stakeholders here at the meeting tonight. Just a couple thank yous I want to give, as well as a couple updates. Just want to give a special thank you to everyone who participated yesterday in the gathering, the time of feeling we had downtown, all of the faith and mental health leaders who were there, and really created a space to honor those who have lost loved ones. And just a reminder to those, all of our residents who are out there grieving loss, just a reminder that they're not alone, and that we're here for them, and that there's a number of resources and people here to support them. Also, wanted to clarify a couple things in terms of the Broad Street. I got a chance to kind of read some of the feedback around Broad Street. As you know, there's some really exciting projects there on the purview that happened on Broad Street, and it's going to be one of the busiest streets in the city. It's already a busy street, it's going to be even busier. But I saw some of the concern was around the shared use path that is along the side there, and I just want to clarify that, you know, a shared use path, if you go to North Ridgeville, you'll see them there, you'll see them in Lorraine as well. It's not a bike path, it's actually for bikers, strollers, wheelchairs, you know, it's really for walkers, it's really supposed to be used just for anybody who's being active in transportation. And we're fortunate to have the Lorraine County Public Health here today as well, and they'll be talking about it at the next committee meeting. The other piece I wanted to bring some clarity to is around the traffic management system, which went through committee last week, and the idea that, you know, the purpose of this traffic management system is really, a lot of feedback I heard when we were out campaigning and knocking on doors, hearing what people were interested in, it was interesting that the number of people said they hated waiting at lights when there was no traffic. And they talked about when they're on their way to work and starting their day, how frustrating is to sit at a light and there's no cars coming. So this traffic management system is really, it's about efficiency and having a smart traffic system within the city. And I know there's a lot of talk about license plates and law enforcement, but that's not the goal of this system. That's a secondary goal. The primary goal is to create efficiencies within the traffic system that we have here in the city. And then looking forward, a couple referrals that we put, that'll be discussed next Monday, the Parks Master Plan that was approved back in 2016, we wanted to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments and projects that have been completed, as well as lift up to you all, some of the projects that are still pending to be completed, one of them being the Outdoor Aquatic Center. So we'll be discussing that at the upcoming committee meeting as your lead chair. And so that's one of the projects, as well as some projects at North Park, South Park, and also West Park, that we're recommending us have some discussion on, and eventually some decisions as we go into 2022. The last thing I'll share is this week is a busy week. The Garford Arts Fest is this Saturday, so encourage the community to get out and support that downtown, as well as we're hosting our Hackathon, which is a virtual experience where we're inviting residents and other folks to join online and help come up with solutions to Illyria's challenges of the day. You can go to hackfromhome.com/ilyria to learn more, or go on cityofilyria.org. It'll be a great chance to share your ideas and work with residents on solutions to problems here in the city. So that's all I have for my report, and any questions, I'm open for as well.
Any questions for Mayor Whitfield? Very good, Mayor, thank you. All right, Safety Service Director, Brewbaker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple quick things. Next Monday, the 25th, we will roll out the infamous leave truck, so we'll have a couple out the first few weeks. We'll run through the first week of December, into the second week of December. Just be patient, as the leaves fall, the crews will be out. I think we'll have eight crews out at the height of the season. We are asking that they rake their leaves to their curb lawn, not into the street itself for, you know, we don't want those going into our drains and doing backlog of those. Also, the CMG committee team met two final candidates last week. I'm waiting on the final results back from their recommendations, but hopefully in the next week or so, we'll be able to state, or bring to council who we're going to recommend as the design build team for that project. So that is moving forward, and we'll be very close here in the next, like I said, next week or so. And then finally, next Monday at 3:00 here in council chambers, the mayor will be swearing in Chief Pernesty officially as our chief. We went through the entire process of civil service, and he'll move into that chief spot. That will also mean that we'll be swearing in a new assistant chief, which will be Mr. Marks. And because of that person moving up, we'll be swearing in Captain Bud Zar as the new captain. And then because that spot opened up, we'll be promoting Lieutenant Ikenlob to the lieutenant's position of the Illyria Fire Department. So all four of those will be taking place Monday here in council chambers at 3:00. And then one last thing that I just thought of, because I've not really said this in council, but we have it out there, hot trick or treat, will be Saturday, October 30th, 6:00 to 7:30. So please put that on your calendars, and I'll entertain any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Brewbaker? Thank you, Mr. Brewbaker. Finance Director Pluski.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Very good. Any questions for Finance Director Pluski? Law Director Deary?
Mr. President, I have no report this evening.
Fire Department, Chief Pernesty.
First off, I'm happy and ready to take on the role as the fire chief. I'm here for you, whatever I can do and the department can do. Looking forward to working with you all. We did have a fatal fire in the city. I'm sure many of you read about it. It's unfortunate. One of the lessons, though, is, you know, when you talk to your constituents, your residents, make sure they check their smoke detectors. This was a very preventable, maybe, tragedy. So it's just, check them. That's what October Fire Prevention Week is for, we had a couple weeks ago. And now that the heating season's heating up, pun intended, you've got to check your carbon monoxide detectors. Our calls are still going up. We're on average of about 300 and so from last year at this same time. The runs are still there, the COVID calls are still there. With that, welcome, any questions?
Any questions for Chief Pernesty? Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Congratulations, Chief Pernesty.
Thank you.
Years ago, they used to give out fire detectors, smoke detectors, the fire department. Do we still do that?
Our union has purchased several. I'm not sure if we're out yet, but we did have quite a few the last year or so, and residents can always call, you can always refer them to us. If we don't have any now, we will get another order in, but yeah, we did have, we wouldn't call it a total program, but we did have, we did have smoke detectors available.
Thank you.
Again, any other questions for Chief Pernesty? Ms. Davis?
Through you, Mr. President. First off, congratulations.
Thank you.
And today, I saw an amazing thing happen. I saw a helicopter sit down at the fire station at Dale and 57.
Well, I forgot to tell you, we bought a helicopter.
I want to...
Congratulations, Zach.
We got it for about, I don't know, $20,000 a year. I don't, yes. That helicopter was there because what we are doing, when we have a severe emergency, a severe accident, we want to have pre-designed locations to land a helicopter. So our plan is to give them a specific coordinates, or we tell them a landing zone, they're familiar with it, they know where to go. So that's why they were there, they were checking out different areas in town, and then we had a little school about the helicopters.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Well, again, Mr. Chief Pernesty, thanks. Congratulations to you and those other ones who are moving up in the ranks. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you. We did not buy a helicopter.
Illyria Police Department, Captain Pelco. Assistant Safety Service Director, Ms. Calvert.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to advise council that last Thursday, we did open up the ARP Small Business Grant Program. We've gotten a lot of interest, a lot of questions, and actually seven applications so far. So together with the Community Development Department, we are reviewing those applications for completeness and eligibility, and we will be sharing them with the Illyria Economic Development Committee when we've been able to go through them all. So probably about a week's time to do that first slot. Again, we have $500,000 available through that program to be able to help small businesses that have been impacted by COVID. And I would just remind everybody to please submit the applications and any questions to covidbusiness@cityofilyria.org.
Any questions for Ms. Calvert? Thank you, Ms. Calvert. Assistant Safety Service Director, Mr. Williams. Very good.
I just wanted to let council know about two things that we have put together in Human Resources. One thing is the new employee orientation. We're planning our first one on October 27th. It's going to be for full-time employees hired between January 1st and October 1st of this past year. We have about 35 employees that are going to be attending, and they're from all different areas of the city. It's a half-day program. Directors will be giving brief presentations about their department and sharing what employees need to know about their departments. So we'll have presentations by the mayors, Safety Service Director Brewbaker, Assistant Safety Service Director Calvert, Law Director Deary, IT Director Ross Gary, representatives from Police and Fire, and then also some Human Resources benefits and policy things. Plan to run the program two times a year and have feedback from all the participants to make sure that we're hitting the right things people need to know about when they're new employees.
Very good.
The second thing was that we are planning an online platform for open enrollment. It's being devised right now. It's going to be a positive enrollment, meaning that everyone has to sign up this year. So open enrollment's going to run from November 1st to November 12th, and all benefits-eligible employees will have an opportunity to sit down with a benefit specialist right next to them and go through exactly what all of the different benefit selections are and what people want to choose. If we have employees who are real comfortable with technology, they may choose to sign up without sitting down with somebody. It's going to be all online. And we're changing our voluntary benefits to a different vendor. The voluntary benefits and the build-out of the online system, we're all done free of charge, so that was, that was a good deal for us. For council members who are electing insurance, if you're interested in sitting down with the benefits professional, we can arrange that. I can let you all know when people are, when representatives are going to be here at City Hall, that you can, you can make appointments and go ahead and meet with them. So, any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Usefi? All right, thank you, Ms. Usefi. I've been notified that we're having technical difficulties with, they can hear us in the audio, but they cannot hear us visually, they cannot see us. But I don't know if there's...
...the screen is muted.
Okay. Okay, so at that time, once we go through that, I guess that will be, very good, thank you.
Council President, just real quick on that, we just are trying out a new system as well, that we're going to work with the IT, so we might have a solution for it by the next meeting.
Right. So our viewing audience in your home and your confines, we're basically just going over the agenda that's going to be presented to, before council as a whole for a vote. So that's the reason why there's, there's no video that you can see all of us here. City Engineer, Mr. Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to update council on a couple projects. Street resurfacing is in full force, there should be a lot of crews out there right now tackling the roads, getting those done. Phase one, I believe they were about 75% complete as far as asphalt. Phase two started today, and they had, I believe, two or three crews out there working. So they are going to knock it out hopefully quick. Also, out there, you'll see there's some crack ceiling going on, so we just wanted to make sure people are aware that we're out there doing that work and slow down and try not to drive too the tar. The contractor is doing his best to control, control the traffic, so. Also, I just wanted to update council on the, over in the Eastern Heights area, around the Eastern Heights School, you will see some changes in some traffic over there as well. We're looking to add a few stop signs around the Eastern Heights School for the new entrances to the school, as well as we will be doing some work around the Old Prospect School, removing the, the stop sign for the Old Prospect School, and installing a new four-way traffic stop at University instead. So I guess with that.
I did have a question, Mr. Schneider. I was at the meeting here on Thursday for the Broad Street. I know there was recommendations that we had asked the residents there in attendance at that time to put in, and seeing that's doable with what we can do. Will we be having another follow-up meeting based on those recommendations and the finalization so that it can come before the residents again, if there's anything more that's, so there's a, it's clear of what's going to be proposed?
Yeah, we do not have another public meeting scheduled. We do have the open comments open for 30 days, so if people have comments, please send those to us, and we will add it to the comments and see what we can and can't do. I have not gone through those yet, I have not had time to go through those, but we will address those and discuss those with O'Dot as well.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. If I could just make a suggestion, the next time we do a public meeting, can we make it so that working people can attend? Like, I don't get off work till 5:00. By the time I would have gotten here, the meeting would have been over, and I know that's the case for so many residents that actually wanted to attend, so maybe 6:00 to 7:00 might be doable? That's just a suggestion.
Sure, sure, that's not a problem. We do, my door's always open, so if somebody does want to come up and look at the plans, I'm more than welcome to sit down with them and go over with them, so they can understand them.
Mr. Sarah?
Through you, Mr. President. You didn't mention anything about Phase 3? And then on Phase 1 and 2, do you know if they're going to have the manholes and that kind of stuff taken care of this year?
So the plan is to start, start those this year. Weather will dictate whether or not they're all done this year or next year. It's not, the only streets that we would have an issue as far as the manholes are concerned would be areas where we had concrete roads, and I've instructed my inspector to make sure they do those ones first, so that they're lifted to the proper elevation. Areas where we mill and fill, typically the manholes are pretty good.
Very good. Mr. Oswald?
Through you, Mr. President. I don't know if I'm going through the right channel when I'm trying to get a speeding sign up. I know Mr. Jarvis puts them up, but am I still supposed to be calling the police department, or do I call him directly, or do I call the engineering, or does it start at the police department? Thank you.
If you call either one, we'll put it on the list and get it done. The nice thing about sending it to the police department, they're aware of it before we do it, and the reason why, but if you want to contact us, Service Director's Office, we'll put it on the list.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Schneider? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I've got everybody covered. Presidents' referrals and remontaries. I'm number one in Community Development. I'm number two in Community Development and Finance. I'm number three in Community Development and Finance. I'm number four in Community Development and Finance. I'm number five, Finance. I'm number six, Finance. I'm number seven, Finance. I'm number eight, Finance. I'm number nine, Finance. I'm number, item number 10, Utility Safety and Environment. Item number 11, Utilities, Safety and Environment. Items 12 through 16 received and placed on file in the clerk's office. Petitions and remontaries from council members?
There are none.
Petitions and remontaries from the lobby?
We have several. Melanie Husky, reimbursement for sewage cleanup.
Welcome. If you could please, if you could please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Melanie Husky. I live at 125 Tannery Street, Illyria, Ohio. This is regards to an issue on March 25th. It was a beautiful day, I was outside working all day. My neighbor, two lots down, had rotor rudder there. I live next door to the Illyria Pump House, which is right next door to me. Anyways, they were working all day long, we both got done about the same time, and I was talking to him a little bit, and he said, he could tell they opened them up when they heard the giant whooshing sound that his sewage was open. So I went in the house, we were all done. My house smelled terrible, and I thought, they opened the line, so maybe I'll go down, I'll do a load of laundry, clear it out. I walked down my basement stairs, and I had four inches of sewage in my basement. The giant whooshing sound was the sewage coming up in my basement. I called the wastewater guy back out, he was wonderful, he came right back out, tried to open it up from my outside, it would not work. I needed ProServe to come out, they were there for five days. I called ProServe, I had a plumber there, I had other people there trying to get everything fixed, it was a disaster. And I have never had a problem with water in my basement. When the whole city is flooded and they're having issues, I'm very blessed, I have no problems with water in the basement. So I called ProServe seven times to try to get my paperwork, to fill the paperwork I just fill out to the city. The gentleman that was there, from the wastewater man, told me that, Melanie, we know this is the city's fault. My boss, Aaron, knows this is the city's fault, which took a huge weight off my shoulders. He told me, you can get the paperwork at City Hall to fill out and send in. The next day, he hand-delivered that paperwork to me at my door, which I was so grateful for. So at any rate, I have a certain amount of time to get that paperwork filled out and sent in. ProServe waited up until I had two days left to fill that paperwork out, and one of those days, I was in New York for a funeral. I filled the paperwork out, most of the stuff that was thrown away and should have been accounted for, there was no listing of it, which explains why it took me so long to get my paperwork. I emailed Mr. Brewbaker. I don't use emails, it's the first attachment I've ever sent in my life, you might hope that's hard to believe. Mr. Brewbaker informed me he could read nothing that I sent. So I went and made copies of everything, I put it in a manila envelope, I attached my label and my phone number, and I hand-delivered it to City Hall. And I waited, and I waited, because it said four to six weeks, and I've been told before with things with the city, have patience, Melanie. So I have patience, and I waited. And finally, I called the Safety Service Director at 7:12:21, and they never called me back. So I finally decided I'd check that email that I never use and see what it said, and lo and behold, it said I needed an insurance page. So I got the fax number out, I called Tammy at Nationwide, she is absolutely fantastically wonderful. I gave her the fax number, told her what I needed, she said she'd send it right back On 8/11/21, I received a letter from the Law Director informing me that there was no receipt of insurance, because the fax number that is on the city paperwork that I was given does not work. So I said, here's Tammy's number, she's great, wonderful, please talk to her, she'll get everything straightened out for me. She said that they went back and forth quite a few times, nothing that she would say to them would make them understand, I am not covered for that. I have no coverage for that. She could send them something saying that I'm not covered for that, but that was not good enough. I needed to file a claim. I've never filed a claim in 33 years. My understanding is it's not a good idea to file a claim if you can avoid it. But I have to file a claim with the city in order to get this going on. So in the meantime, I receive, we call, we start getting the ball rolling for the claim with the adjuster. In the meantime, I receive a letter from the Law Director on 8/18, seven days later, after I was told the fax didn't work, denying my claim because of paperwork for the insurance was not received. My only recourse is to file a morals claim letter at this point. So I waited until I got the paperwork from the adjuster, and I wrote out a seven-page morals claim letter, and I dropped that off on September 9th, 1921. And I was told I would wait and have to speak. And I've waited, and I've waited, and I have not heard a thing, and for I'm getting, ProServe is threatening to sue me, as I can understand that. Fortunately for me, I ran into my councilwoman two Sundays ago, Diane Simmons, Councilwoman Simmons, and she told me my best bet is to come up here and plead my case. So that is what I'm doing, that is what is happening to me. I feel like I'm the injured party here, and I am getting no recourse whatsoever, and I've just had to jump through hoop after hoop after hoop.
Okay.
And I don't know what else to do at this point.
Well, very good. Well, first of all, we're sorry for the incident that happened. What I would suggest is that, you know, stay here after, we'll make the proper, send it to a committee to hear this moral claim. We could have the Law Director assist you, and just kind of making sure that you're going through all those formalities to get it to the committee, just to basically rehear what you just had given us tonight, and that the Finance Committee and the council as a whole will hear that as well, and then we'll make a determination based on what's being presented.
So I'll have to go through this again?
Well, it has to go through the committee, because they're rejecting... Well, it, it has to go through the committee as a, it's because they're rejecting it. You come to committee, to Finance Committee, we'll review all the documentation again, and at that point, you know, a decision will be made by the committee.
Now, will somebody let me know when that meeting is?
Yes.
And, or do I have to?
Yes.
I mean, 'cause nobody's letting me know anything.
Yes.
And I'm in the dark here, and I'm, you know-
Right.
I mean, when I get, you know, when I found out about the insurance, I was on the phone the same day. I, I've been doing everything, and-
Sure.
Here I am.
Right. Well, we're sorry for that. We'll make sure that, you know, well, through, uh, after tonight's meeting, we'll make sure I'll give you a call tonight or tomorrow, kinda confirm everything that you need to do, and we'll get it in the process to get it referred. Okay?
Can't tell you how grateful I would be.
All right. Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming up. And just a reminder, they have three minutes, so.
Sure.
All right. Andrew Lepine, uh, Council Committees. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Andrew Lepine, 614 Garford Ave., Aleria, Ohio, 44035. Judy Keys' families and my thoughts and prayers. Today, I rise before you not as supervisor of the Lorraine County Records Center, nor as a board member for Lorraine County Children's Services, nor yet as a veteran, though I am all those things. Here, I'm just a concerned dad and an Aleriyan who has the burden of modeling good character for his children, even when that of the city has been tarnished. Though I obviously refer to the indiscretions of a certain member of council, I will not belabor that point. Much already has been said of it, and I, a sinner, will not judge the sin of another. I shall, however, discuss what character is and how city council has failed to demonstrate it. The word "character" in Greek means to etch or mark on the body. It's like a tattoo. But even more than that, character is a marking on the soul. The Greeks understood that character can only happen by continuous habit, continually etching on the soul. You can only build character when you continuously do something of meaning that marks the soul. Aristotle once said, "Our characters are the result of our conduct. It is the mark of excellence." Respectfully, in reaction to the solicitation charge brought against a member of this body, city council has etched the mark of shame upon our city. First, Council President Vic Stewart said of this councilman's poor conduct that this shouldn't be a reflection of his character. He is just a stellar citizen, end quote, and that Aleria City Council was, quote, "standing behind him." Days later, council backpedaled, calling for his resignation. Now, forgive me, council. But with trick-or-treat right around the corner, even the best of witches and wizards couldn't fool the city of Aleria with this hocus pocus. First, we stood behind him. Now, we don't. But to be charitable to our esteemed council, let's place the flip-flop on the other foot. To avoid retribution, council will argue, his was just a failure in judgment. We didn't do it. We asked him to resign. He doesn't speak for us, so we should keep our seats. This argument fails when we look at what council did not do. They didn't take the solicitous member off his plum committee post. He still sits on the Finance, Community Development, and Strategic Planning Committees, and he's still Chairman of Rules. They didn't join us a few days ago in a solemn march against human trafficking. No, indeed. Two members of this council watched outside as we passed City Hall with grins of amusement on their faces. I saw it. They didn't lead and cannot therefore lead us into the future. And so, I ask Aleria, what kind of tattoo will we allow this council to mark us with? What will be our collective character? How much abuse must our city take before we say finally, that enough is enough? This November, help end this nightmare of economic and moral poverty. Help heal our city from this council's failed leadership. Let's not fail to meet this moment. Let's show that conduct like this doesn't just deserve a slap on the wrist. Let's show city council that if they won't take Jesse off these committees, council's poor mark doesn't have to be ours. Let's etch the tattoo of good character upon our breast and jettison this council that has failed to lead us when we so dearly needed their leadership most.
I'm John Gaul, 424 Augusta Drive, Aleria. A21 is a global nonprofit that focuses on human slavery and trafficking. The number of victims trapped in this modern-day slavery is forty-point-three million, according to the International Labor Organization. That number is more than the population of Canada. In America, you may not see the exploitation for labor or the forced marriages. What you see here is the most common form of human trafficking, and that is sexual exploitation. Rennie Stiles, retired Aleria Police Department dispatcher, organized a silent walk here in Aleria with her daughter Naomi. The Chronicle Telegram, uh, presented this event in Thursday's edition. This event highlighted what real human trafficking is, and that it happens here in Lorraine County. There are nearly two dozen participants. When a person is exploited for sex, by some measure of force, fraud, or coercion, it is human trafficking. When a person is seeking to purchase sex, that person does not know if the other party is being trafficked. They weigh the risk, knowing it is against the law. They put faith that a condom will protect them from an S G D, never considering the consequences. They just think that this is a victimless crime. It is not. This describes my third ward councilman, a perpetrator in the largest human trafficking sting in Ohio history, making the national news. Now, this sting freed sixteen adults, ten children. This council, in your weak response to your colleague versus you, you stated stellar citizen in all ways, you are no more than a sock puppet for all to see at a used car lot, with no backbone, initially siding with your colleague as though there is nothing to see here. Then, after being pummeled for your inaction, you put out a call for resignation, and what Andy Young Sunday described as serving their interests in divorcing themselves from him and protecting power. You have never considered removing him from the committees he serves on. So much for your watchdog bark. You have no teeth. My councilman sta- states he will not be resigning, so it is now up to the voters. In essence, voters will have a decision to overlook and allege but confess human trafficker and say, I am okay with this. And my neighbors in the Third Ward, don't support human trafficking. Don't allow this stain to continue. And just like Akin Sin in the Book of Joshua, this city will have to answer.
Mark Wiseman. Fence ordinance alleyway on 760 and West 16th Street.
My name is Mark Wiseman. Uh, I live at 707 East Avenue, and I tried to erect a fence back in 2016, and it's kinda fell in the wayside. Um, I've been going through issues with the city Building Department, trying to meet their recommendations on specifically the city ordinance. I'm gonna bring that up here. Okay. That was issued back in 1990, and that states that the alleyway that is bounding my backyard my property, and it's up to me to take care of it. Here is my property here in the yellow, and as you can see, the alleyways go throughout the entire block between Douglas, 16th Street, West Avenue, and 18th Street. I have plenty of evidence showing that there's buildings, fences, concrete parking lots being erected on this properties, and I would like to do the same with my abutting property This is the property. This is where I grew up. This is the site plan. And as you can see, the area in the pink is the adjacent alleyway, and I'd like to erect a fence along the back portion of eighty foot of that alleyway and box in the backyard of my property. For some reason, Building Department, they told me that I must go through council to get approval to have any type of structure put on this, um, alleyway. This is the fence that was, uh, originally plotted. My dad put up in eighty-five, and as you can see, it is pretty close to the street. I took that down, of going to actually put new fence up, and that's when I ran into problems with the city and, um, the restrictions as far as erecting a new fence. So, I'm currently going through, uh, getting a variance, and that will be on November 4th. I just applied for that today, and I'll find out about the, the, the structure I'd like to put along with the fence is a workshop. Okay? So, with the council's consideration, I'd like you to evaluate my situation and see if I can put this fence up.
Well, you're doing the right thing. You're going through the, the necessary steps in the process for that, and I would think once it gets through there, it would come before either the, the Community Development and what their findings through the Planning Commission and through the Building Department, whatever those required steps are. So, you're going about the right path and doing all that. So, once it comes to council, you'll have your, you know, come back in front of us here again today, or, uh, in the near future to describe what your intentions are. Well, Director Dear, did you wanna add anything more to that?
Uh, just to you, Mr. President. I mean, it, it sounds, uh, Mr. Wiseman's saying is that he's already, uh, filed for the variance and, and that it's, um, unfortunately, it's, it's not a swift process, but, but he, he's pursuing it properly.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, if you could, please leave that information with the Clerk's Office, so they would have the copies of that, and then-
Okay.
We can go from there.
Very good. Thank you very much.
That's all petitions and remontresses from the lobby? Reports of sustaining and special committees?
We have one item. We consider the matter of a liquor license transfer request is submitted by E L N A Inc. at 1063 Broad Street to be transferred to O K T LLC, 1063 Broad Street, Aleria, and the city of Aleria does not request a hearing.
Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. President, I ask that this, um, committee report be passed on its first reading.
Second. Second by Mr. Sarah. Is there any further discussion? Questions that are called, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Committee Report, uh, 2021-10. That's all committee reports. Resolutions, first reading? Sponsored by Finance. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Mr. Tallett?
Mr. President, I ask that this resolution be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Sponsored by Community Development Finance. A resolution in support of the Aleria Community Development Corporation, A D, the city of Aleria grant application, oh, and, excuse me, and the city of Aleria grant application to the North Family Foundation. Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. President, I ask that this, this resolution be passed on its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second. Second by Mr. Sarah. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Sponsored by Finance. A resolution approving a list submitted by the Safety Service Director for the collection of delinquent inactive utility accounts and directing the Clerk of Council to certify said accounts to the Lorraine County Auditor. Mr. Tallett?
Mr. President, I ask that this resolution be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Resolutions, second reading. One second. That's all for resolutions first reading. There are no second- Resolution second reading?
There are none.
Resolutions, third reading? There are none. Sponsored by Community Development Finance. An ordinance authorizing the use of city-owned real property located at Pioneer Plaza Park, 328 Broad Street, Aleria, Ohio, for purposes of the Garford Arts Festival, under guidelines and procedures as adopted by the Aleria City Safety Service Director and declare an emergency. Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed on its first reading under suspension of rules and declare an emergency. Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Sponsored by Community Development Finance. An ordinance granting exception to the city of Aleria's subordination policy for community development rehabilitation loan as requested by Peggy Oster. Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed on its first reading under suspension of rules. Okay.
Second by Ms. Simmons. Is there any further discussion? On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Sponsored by Finance. An ordinance amending ordinance number 2021-50, known as the 2021 Permanent Appropriations Ordinance, to change funds in various accounts. Mr. Tallett?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Sponsored by Finance. An ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to transfer funds to specified account and declare an emergency. Mr. Tallett?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Sponsored by Finance. An ordinance amending Aleria Codified Ordinance's Section 951.13, Indigit Barrels, Indigit Barrels, excuse me. Mr. Tallett?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Ordinance 2021-16- Sponsored by Utility Safety Environment and Finance. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the purchase of Centrax Program for a citywide traffic management system in accordance with federal procurement requirements and declare an emergency. Ms. Mitchell.
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed on its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency. Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, real quick. I promise I'll be fast with this. This item on the agenda has brought up a little bit of controversy, and I want to clear a few things up. Number one issue with this is it is supported by both the police and fire department wholeheartedly. It's for safety. When police and fire responding through an intersection, they will now be able to take control of that intersection remotely. The second issue with this system, ease of traffic. Everyone, I believe, who is sitting in this room tonight has gotten frustrated, sitting at the lights on 57 and Abbey or West River or Golf and Poplar is a very hot-button system. This will help alleviate many of those issues. It is not used for traffic enforcement. If I blow a red light, which allegedly happened once in the past, I'm not going to get a ticket in the mail. It's not how the system is set up or what it's set up for. It is for traffic management to move us faster through Elyria and under control. That's what this system is about. I really dug into this one when it became, and I don't want to say controversial because it's not, in digging in where other cities are using it, the city of Elyria has roughly 55,000 residents, give or take. And please excuse my writing, we have 55,000 residents. In most residential cities like ours, half of those, 27,500 people in our city, drive. They drive through Elyria every day, at some point, going to work, going to school, going to jobs, going to the grocery store, whatever it may be. This system will save the average taxpayer in this city just under 10 cents a day. And you say 10 cents a day, it's in fuel savings, and this study was based when fuel was $2 a gallon. When you do the math on this, the savings to the taxpayers over a 10-year period is $9,900,000 on a $1 million investment, on top of making our city safer, on top of moving you through the city faster. So I want to see this is a 10 to 1 return over a 10-year period for this system. That's all I have to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tolet. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions, they're called. On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Sponsored by Utility Safety Environment and Finance. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement to purchase hatch turbine meters and lab turbine meters for the water pumping plant through the State of Ohio Purchasing Program or equivalent program and declare an emergency. Ms. Mitchell.
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed on its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency. Second.
Second by Ms. Simmons. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Ordinance 2021-163. Sponsored by Utility Safety Environment and Finance. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase and installation of chemical feeders, carbon storage tank, mixer, carbon dust collector system, and ancillary equipment for the water pumping plant and declare an emergency. Ms. Mitchell.
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed on its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency. Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Ordinance 2021-164. That's all ordinance's first reading. Ordinance's second reading. There are none. Ordinance's third reading. There are none. Committee calls. Community Development requests the law director, safety service director, building inspector, and engineer on Monday, 10:25 at 6:00 P. M. All items referred to council chambers. Joint C D Finance requests the mayor, law director, finance director, safety service director, and engineer on Monday, 10:25, 6:00 P. M. All items referred to council chambers. Finance requests the mayor, law director, finance director, safety service director, and engineer on Monday, 10:25, immediately filing a joint. All items referred in the council chambers. Utility Safety Environment requests the law director, safety service director, and engineer on Wednesday, 10:27, 6:00 P. M. All items referred to council chambers. And Strategic Planning requests the safety service director, finance, excuse me, the mayor, safety service director, finance director, and law director on Monday, 11:01, immediately filing council. All items referred to council chambers. Ms. Lanis, unfinished business.
Mr. President, through you. I spoke to Ms. House during the meeting here, and I was able to get her information. The moral claim runs through the Safety Service Director's office.
Good.
So I'll make sure that that gets referred and work with Ms. Deary's office to make sure that comes before you at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Brubaker. Mayor Whitfield?
Just one thing I forgot to mention, our Elyria reporter, Lena Yost, this is her last meeting covering us. She's moving on, so I want to acknowledge her for her fair reporting of the city and good luck in the next step.
Ms. Yost, thank you for covering the city of Elyria, City of Elyria Council, and your hard work and efforts at the Chronicle Telegram. We're going to miss you. Good luck in your future endeavors. I wanted to address a couple of comments tonight that were made by the general public in regards to the human solicitation and the human trafficking and the solicitation. You know, we ran through this, the process, and we didn't condone these actions by Mr. Jesse, and we don't. And we moved forward with that. We asked for his resignation, and we did everything that we can possibly do in over and this. We don't condone the behavior, and from now on, as council, we're moving forward. Thank you. Anybody else has miscellaneous unfinished business?
There are none, Mr. President. I move with you.
Moved by Mr. Baird. Second. Second by Mr. Tolet. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried.